Order the joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council, the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, and the Glendale Housing Authority. May we have a roll call for the City Council, please?
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
And for the Redevelopment Agency, please.
Agency members, Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Draymond.
Here.
And for the Housing Authority.
Authority members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
So here.
Mincy.
Here.
Rosian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Najarian.
Here.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
Agenda for the February 16, 2010, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council, Glendale Redevelopment Agency, and the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, February 11, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City -- oh, pardon me.
I am before you the three bodies today as the Director of Community Planning and Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding City of Glendale green building policy, consideration of alternatives for affordable housing and public and private development, one is council motion providing direction to staff.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Redevelopment Agency, and Housing Authority, quick introduction of this matter, then I'll turn to Phil and staff for a more in-depth report. At your meeting of January 26, you recall you considered a policy relative to green building standards for private development in the community. Essentially, you decided to wait until state standards come out on the matter and then evaluate at that time. We should have at that time raised this question as before you today, which is the question of an existing policy that you adopted in July of 2008 that directed your staff with respect to public projects, projects undertaken by the city, or public-private projects such as a affordable housing project. You directed at that time that all those projects shall be LEEDs silver and certified, LEED certified. Inasmuch as your direction with respect to the private development standards is inconsistent with that, we should have raised that at that time and asked you, now, how would you like to treat those public-private and public projects? We didn't, so we brought this back to you at this time to receive your direction on that. That probably significantly upstages the report from staff, but I'll let them get into more of the detail at this point. Phil, to you, or planning staff?
Stephanie Reich, Senior Urban Planner.
Thank you very much. Mr. Starbird, that really concludes staff's report. If you have any additional questions?
Are there any questions or comments? Well, Mr. Lansaffin.
I was just going to say, in the report, we have given you some alternatives if you wish to do something different than you did in July of 2008. The LEEDs certification, Stephanie can talk to that a little bit more, the different elements, the costs, those are different than 2008. We also are a little bit more learned on Green Point rating, and so staff is here to comment on those. As I say, we've got four or five alternatives should you wish to do something. You can put them in any combination you want, or you could leave the 2008 policy direction that you gave us.
Ms. Friedman.
So, has this policy been enforced and in effect since 2008? So, any projects that have come online that are public-private or public projects, are they now building LEED certified silver?
The direction that we were given in July 2008 was for projects that would be newly designed. So, at that point, projects that were already in the pipeline were not considered included. I believe that newly designed projects that are being considered since 2008 have been gone about with that policy in mind.
Okay, so, how's it going?
Since I'm part of the planning department and am less involved in the public development and the housing projects, I don't have a full report on what all the departments have been doing.
What I can tell you from the housing side is that we are seeing in 2008 a certain set of costs to get to that standard. In some cases, those are increasing to a point where developers either need to come back to us or say, "I don't know how to make that." I do know that the Parks Department and George Chapton is here, they have been designing to LEED silver, and that is a cost that's borne by whatever public entity, whether it's the city or the Redevelopment Agency, that is funding that.
And then, the Green Point alternative, can you just break down, I know that there's a lengthy staff report, but I know that the difference in cost is substantial, what about the difference in outcome? Do you have any sense, since we haven't really had that in the city, of, for that less cost, what we'd end up getting?
If I may, I'd like to turn that over to Mike Fortney, since he's very familiar with the Green Point rated and can do a comparison for you.
Good afternoon, I'm Mike Fortney, the Housing Project Manager. To answer the question regarding Green Point rated, Green Point rated, I think I've said this before, it doesn't have the silver, gold, and lead, or platinum, it's just got points, minimum 50, and I think it goes upwards of 300 points. We have looked at some projects that have looked at trying to get LEED certified and LEED silver, and also get Green Point rated, and try to look at kind of what the equivalency is. We've been told for like two years now that they're supposed to come out with a score sheet for both Green Point rated and LEED. There isn't one yet, but it looks like you could probably score somewhere below 100 points on Green Point rated, and I think that would be roughly LEED certified. And possibly 150 points on Green Point rated would be roughly LEED silver. But that's, again, that's based on just the affordable housing products we've got here, and just kind of at staff level, kind of looking at those two systems.
Now, something that really caught my attention in the staff report, and I just wanted you to speak to that, because on the one hand, we just heard from Stephanie that there's additional costs that some of the developers are coming back and asking for, maybe it was Phil said, some of the developers are coming back and asking for additional subsidies, but on page six of the staff report, it says, "The majority of the buildings we studied were able to achieve their goals for LEED certification without any additional funding. Others require additional funding but only for specific sustainable features such as the installation of a photovoltaic system. Additionally, our analysis suggests that the cost per square foot for buildings seeking LEED certification falls into the existing range of costs for buildings of similar program type. From this analysis, we conclude that many projects can achieve sustainable design within their initial budget or with a very small supplemental finding." So, I'm wondering if you can qualify, or tell me how that statement jives with what we heard from Mr. Lansaffin.
That's a very good question. That quote comes from a well-regarded Davis Langdon report on costs of LEED and building green. And the Davis Langdon report, it's very lengthy, it actually goes into the cost credit by credit for a LEED project, and that was a brief piece from the conclusion. What they also found significantly was that if a developer and a development team accept from the very beginning that they're going to move a project through with sustainable goals in mind, they build that into the costs, and they're not perceived as additional costs, and there also can be design choices that are made that don't require additional cost. If after designing a project, a development team goes back and wants to try to meet LEED after a number of decisions have been made, that can then subsequently add cost to the building. So, it's a question of process as well.
Thank you, that clarifies that. So, now, we're coming back to revisit this after the California Building Code comes down. So, what you're asking for today is just, are we suspending the current policy? Are we maintaining that goal of LEED silver? Because it seems like we may not want to be getting into the full discussion, because we're planning on doing that in, what, two months' time? Just to be clear.
Well, if I can, Ms. Mayor, that's the question for you all. You now have a hard and fast policy. As you heard during the January 26 discussion, there are other options and implications. As the staff reported to you then, there is the Green Building Council process, which I think the staff's conclusion was, is more applicable to the housing kinds of projects that you'd be involved with, an affordable housing project, although your policy applies to any project the city would be involved in or would be undertaking. So, it could be everywhere from, let's say, the seismic retrofitting of the MSB building to building a facility at GWP or an affordable housing project. The question, I guess, that's come to us is, do you want to have a hard and fast policy relative to LEEDs silver and certification? Or, in the way we have done with the other private projects at this point, make a decision on a case-by-case basis as to how you want to treat each individual project, some of which may be more applicable for LEEDs, some of which may be more applicable to the Green Building Council, and others, because of cost implications, depending on the nature of the project, you may conclude that you want to have a lesser level than the LEED silver. If indeed there are cost implications, and maybe on some projects there will be, on other projects there may not be, but that can impact both your budget on a particular project, as well as your underwriting costs for something like an affordable housing project. So, I think our suggestion at this point is, much like you did with the broad policy, would make sense to suspend the hard and fast and instead take it up on a case-by-case basis, depending on the nature of the project. At least until you adopt a formal policy relative to private development.
I have an assumption that perhaps some of the professionals can answer. I would assume that LEEDs standards, gold, silver, et cetera, they vary by region. I can't imagine that the same standard would apply for a building, a new construction building in the Chicago Loop. Those standards would be different from LA, or from Miami, or from different regional. Does anyone know if that's the case?
I think I can answer that question. The LEED rating system is a rating system, insofar as it is applied nationally, and because it's a point system where development teams can choose which points are applicable to their projects, it has that inherent built-in flexibility. So, it's not as though, as with, say, the UBC, that the Uniform Building Code that is applied, that's a code that regionally, nationally, everyone needs to follow with additional provisions, state by state, local jurisdictions, et cetera. The LEED system is a flexible system because it's a rating system. Green Point rated is also a rating system and has that flexibility, but as Mike Fortney may have mentioned, Green Point rated system was specifically developed for housing in California.
Are there any other, Mr. Najarian?
I have a question. It stems partly from my discussion with the city attorney. When we first started talking about LEEDs, or when it, you know, came to the public's attention, maybe five, six years ago, maybe more, seven, eight years ago, I think everyone associated LEEDs as synonymous with green, in the general sense. Later on, I started seeing LEEDs with a little trademark on it. And then, as I further became educated on it, I understood that there's special LEEDs training courses that only LEEDs can give, and it's very proprietary in their efforts to have a building or project certified. And I'm a little uncomfortable with that. When we talk about LEEDs, and I know, speaking for myself, when I, back in 2008, when we were talking about LEEDs, I was thinking of a general green standard, not so much a specific proprietary with a trademark with R circled, evaluation or certification system. And I understand, I was only recently aware of the Green Point system. I then became aware of the new proposed California Building Code, but I understand there's maybe 10 or 15 other rating systems or programs in which green and sustainable building is encouraged and graded, if you will. So, I'm a little uncomfortable going towards LEEDs trademark, because there may well be others out there, and as we've seen in some of our prior discussions, there are additional costs to having that LEEDs trademark certified on your buildings, as opposed to being a green building, a energy-efficient building, a sustainable building, and use any of the other adjectives that you want to with that. So, I'm a little bit uncomfortable when we're discussing standards to say, LEEDs to be our standard. And I would like to learn a little bit more about all these other standards that are out there. I think we're, everyone now, this is, you know, the new decade of the new millennium, we're all very much committed to having a certain level of sustainability and green features in our buildings, and energy efficient and water efficient, and recyclable, and all this other stuff. And I would like to get a better understanding of the options for us to meet our own concepts and ideas of sustainability, and perhaps look at other ratings which aren't necessarily trademarked. I'm a little taken back by the trademark, I mean, to be honest with you. I see it as being very ironic that the goal is sustainability, you think, oh, it's just for the good of the system, but then it's trademarked, and you have to have your officially certified inspectors and trainees to be able to give you that certification. So, I guess my point in all that is, I would be very much willing to look at other types of ratings and sustainability factors that we can look at as a council and decide how best to apply it, and perhaps lose some of that additional certification and franchise, if you will, franchise fees that we're inevitably paying to the Green Building Council, and God bless them, I'm glad they were at the forefront, and they've really brought us a long way, but I think as everyone catches up, I think we have to be aware of our other options.
Well, you are right, Mr. Najarian, LEED is proprietary, and that is a concern of mine as well. Particularly when, in looking back at the meeting, the special meeting of the Council, Housing Authority, and Redevelopment Agency from July 1, 2008, and looking at the comments made by everyone on the dais before voting, and looking at the report, we were talking about LEED as though that was almost governmental, in a way, almost something that the federal government was doing, instead of understanding that this was a particular rating system that is, you know, being promoted by a particular entity. Green Point was almost an asterisk in that entire discussion. Another thing I noticed about that meeting was that, as each of our colleagues up here spoke about how they were going to cast their vote and why, no one focused on, not one speaker, myself included, well, at work, get to let Councilmember Friedman off the hook on this too, because she wasn't here at the time, but none of us focused at all on the issue of city projects that are in partnership, in other words, subsidized projects or that sort of thing. We were only focusing on discussion about city projects, city buildings. In other words, taxpayer was going to pay these costs. If there were extra costs to be paid, it's a city project, taxpayer was going to pay it. We weren't focusing on the partnership programs, like affordable housing, that's addressed in this, on today's agenda, where the, as Stephanie pointed out, whether we perceive them as additional costs or not, those too also, as we come back after the design period and say, hey, this has now got to be, this has to be LEED silver. That too is coming out of the taxpayer's pocket, because the builders of, for example, affordable housing simply come back and say, okay, you want photovoltaic, you can have photovoltaic, here's price tag, let's up the subsidy. So, I'm not prepared to, A, say it's going to be LEED, and I'll borrow your catchphrase, Mr. Najarian, trademark, and say it's only that one outfit. That's what we did back in July 1 of 2008. I think we are far more, I won't say we are learned on the subject, but we're getting up on the learning curve of education on this, and so I'm not going to make that mistake again. I will, and I consider it a mistake, we should not have said LEED. We didn't say LEED silver or equivalent, or LEED silver or other rating systems equivalents. We said LEED silver minimum only. I also learned that at the council meeting from July 1, 2008, thanks to my colleague immediately to my right, the mayor, had just come back from a meeting, and I can't remember which meeting, but it was a League of Cities type meeting, or League of Governments, Association of Governments type meeting, and was reporting back that there were some 14 to 16 different rating systems statewide or nationally, it wasn't clear, that do this sort of thing. So, clearly, there are other rating systems. The other interesting things I noticed, a lot of these studies that, well, I guess we assume are done by objective organizations and analytical data houses, they don't differentiate when they come right down to it about LEED certification. They say what the costs are, Green Point perhaps versus LEED certified. Then, they don't take it a step beyond that and say LEED silver, LEED gold, LEED platinum. It's rare when they do that. And as I've read all these studies online, and these reports online, they vary greatly as to what they estimate the additional costs being, to move from, say, LEED certified to LEED silver, LEED silver to LEED gold, et cetera. They're all over the map. And then, I've also read the staff reports, which are in concert with some of those reports and wildly in opposition to others. I am on the record as saying I do not believe that we should be applying a LEED silver standard to affordable housing. Perhaps Green Point, but I would want to hear a report from Mike Fortney, who has spent some time and really has indicated to us that he can bring us up to speed on the Green Point rating system as an example. I'm not sure that today is the day to do that, but regardless, I don't want to see that imposed as an added contortion on top of affordable housing. Here are the reasons. Affordable housing is not straightforward funding. Funding for that comes from a variety of areas, it is complicated, as members of this Housing Authority know. It is a little trickier than somebody just coming forward and saying, I want to build a project, an apartment house, or what have you. The deal this Housing Authority makes to subsidize those kinds of projects, we make today. We make it today, and then we come back and we say, you know, we want to add this, we want to add that, we want to add photovoltaic, you know what, we want to see solar panels on the roof, and golly, we know so much as a Housing Authority, we don't even differentiate between photovoltaic and solar panels. We think of them as all being the same, and the price tags are all different. But the main reason I don't want to see that contortion put onto affordable housing is because affordable housing is something that supposedly this Housing Authority thinks is a good thing for this city. We say it brings benefits with it for the public good, and I don't think that we should foreclose affordable housing or put an added price tag on it that we ourselves end up paying, the taxpayer ends up paying, because we've lumped it together with other kinds of city projects. I'm not ready to do that right now. I may be ready to support Green Point or some other rating, but the price tags I'm seeing are too much. For the certification alone on one project, we're being told by the project's architect, who is a LEED certified architect, $50,000 just for the certification project. And that's $50,000 out of our taxpayers' pockets, let alone when we say, hey, let's add a solar system. Okay, so what did they do last time, Mr. Lansaffin, ADI's project? The, what did they tell you? What was it, $720,000 was the cost of the installation, correct? And to date, they've recouped, what, $50,000, I think, something like that? Or they stand to, no, actually, I haven't recouped anything, but within the next five years, they hope to recoup $50,000, I believe.
I've got to look to the staff, because that was done prior to mine, but...
So, the point being that it's easy to sit up here and say, add this, add that, add this, let's do this, this should work. I'm not sure that on that kind of a subsidized program, I'm ready to go there. I know I'm not ready to go there with LEED, maybe with Green Point. In any case, the two policies are inconsistent, and I would like to wait until we have the state green code is revealed to us, and then we can make one comprehensive policy for the city, subsidized or otherwise, private or otherwise.
Any other comment? No. Okay, Ms. Friedman. Then, Mr. Mincy.
Well, a couple comments. First, I hate to use a cliche, but I will. What's good for the goose is good for the gander, and if we're going to tell private developers that we expect them to build sustainable buildings in this city, we should do, at the very least, the same thing. Yeah, there's a cost to building sustainable buildings. From what I've seen, it's recouped over time, and certainly the longer an owner operates a building, the more of that cost they'll recoup because of the energy savings and everything else. So, those savings will eventually come to them, but there is a cost. But there's also a cost to building in terms of the community. There's a cost to increasing density and building more housing in terms of resources, water. We're out there right now asking people to water two, three days a week, and yet we're building more housing. And people rightfully wonder why they should be subsidizing increased density, why we should be building more housing and inviting more people into the city. It's one thing for a private developer to do it, where we can't really stop them if they own the land, but we're doing it. So, to me, building a sustainable building is the answer, that we're going to be increasing the density, and the city's doing it, not a private developer, but the city. We're going to be building housing, but we at least are going to be responsible about it. We're going to build a building that's sustainable, that uses the least amount of resources possible, and that's the answer. So, yes, there's a cost, but I think it's worth it to mitigate that cost of the increased resources from adding more housing stock to the city. Now, in terms of LEED or not LEED, personally, I don't really care, I don't know, I'm not a LEED certified, I'm not an architect, I just want to get to that place of having a sustainable building. Now, it seems to me that the reason that LEED costs this money is not just because it's trademarked, but because they're coming in and performing a service for you. They are certifying that building that it is sustainable. The staff has said over and over again, they can do that, but then you just shift that cost. You have to pay it in terms of staff time, inspections, all of that. What LEED gets for the service that they provide, and yes, they are a business, but for that service that you are paying for, or the builder is paying for, is them coming in and doing those inspections, not just once, but over time, and making sure that that building is performing up to the level that it's been promised to perform. You don't want LEED to do it? Fine, then we do it. We pay the same cost, we just pay it in staff time. So, either way, you're paying. What the LEED does is it shifts that burden to the builder. Now, I would argue that they're getting the benefit, because over time, they're going to have a building that's going to cost less to run, and we all know that utility costs are going up, energy's going to be more expensive, water will be more expensive, believe me, and there'll be less of it, so over time, that builder will have the benefit of a building that's working more efficiently. So, they'll recoup that cost at some point, it may take years, I don't know. I don't know how that all breaks down. The reports that I've read say that they do recoup that cost eventually. Now, if we do it, if we don't use LEED, if our staff does it, we pay that cost... Now, if we do it, if we don't use LEED, if our staff does it, we pay that cost, we don't get anything back for it, they get a sustainable building on our dime. That's okay with me, if that's where this council wants to go, but that's what the staff report says. Either we pay it, or they pay it. Some of these other ratings like Greenpoint, it sounds like for housing, a more affordable option, and if it gets us to the same place of a sustainable building, that's fine. I have no particular, I have no connection to LEED. But this council adopted a policy in 2008. It's almost two years. To step back now and say, hey, we didn't realize that there were costs involved, or, you know, we're going to wait for the state to come and trump our standards, I don't see buildings stopping because we have this standard. I don't see any reason why now we're going to be getting rid of this standard. For what reason? We might as well keep it in place. It's been in place now for almost two years. We're talking about a couple of months until this comes back. I just don't think that, you know, what's going on right now in terms of the environment and resources, I'm certainly not going to support scrapping the only green building standard that we have on the books, because we're afraid that it's going to cost extra money for a developer. I have staff telling me that if they are aiming towards some kind of sustainability early on in the process, they avoid a lot of those costs. I've spoken to a lot of developers myself. I've gone out and asked them, are you building LEED buildings? Are you building sustainable buildings? And what are you finding? The ones that I've spoken to have told me that, to them, getting LEED Silver, at least in tent, they're already doing it in Pasadena, they're doing it in Long Beach, they're building that way all over the city. They're not finding that it's onerous for them, cost-wise. So certainly, there are builders out there that are doing this, and they're not having a problem. I know that Pasadena has added a lot of affordable housing stock. They've managed to do that under a much stricter building standards than we have. So clearly, they're able to add affordable housing and still building with LEED or LEED in tent, so it can be done. I think that, you know, if we're serious about sustainability, we just have to recognize, yeah, maybe there's costs, but it's an important thing to do, and there's no way that I would vote at this point to just say, hey, you know what? This environmental thing, maybe, you know, it's costing us a little extra money, just not going to do it. So that's where I stand.
Mr. Mincy, then Mr. Drayman.
I would like, Mike Fortney, if you could come up for a minute. We're talking about, I was sitting here thinking, I was thinking to the people that are listening, and figuring out, what are we talking about? And why do we want this green concept? Okay, we have the environment, we have sustainable buildings, but also, is it not true, if you could, when we have some of these affordable housing projects, doesn't getting the money, the loan, or the financing, doesn't that affect too if they have a LEEDs project, or at least they're working in that direction? Could you kind of clear that up for us?
Yeah, I think I can. Again, Mike Fortney, the Housing Project Manager. It's true that some of our affordable housing projects can be more competitive if they are built or designed to be more sustainable. They won't get any extra credit or extra points if they're billed a green or LEED, but if they do go through kind of a checklist of items for sustainable development, they will get, they'll be more competitive. That is true. The rating systems, both LEED and Greenpoint rated, there's a lot of, you know, there's a three, four, five-page checklist. A lot of those checklists, a lot of those things that you can check, they won't return any money to the development. Some will. As an example, low or no VOC paint. That's not going to affect the bottom line of the project. Recycled content carpet probably isn't going to have any bottom line effect on the, but other things such as exceeding Title 24, the energy efficiency of the building, exceeding that by 15, 20, 25 percent, it gets you money in your pocket down the road, and that's a quantifiable number, but it also makes you more competitive with the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee as an example. Another one that we've seen recently is the county. The county is kind of adopting what CTCAC has done, and not necessarily requiring Greenpoint rated, but also making those applications more competitive if they follow that same kind of laundry list. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Mr. Drayman.
Okay, well, I want to respond. My colleague, Ms. Friedman, speaks with a great deal of passion, and I appreciate that. This is one of her interest areas, and I appreciate that, I respect it, and I agree with most of it. Just want to clarify something. We're not talking about, or at least I'm not talking about, whether or not there's a, we're talking, I'm speaking specifically about affordable housing. And in that discussion, in the points that were just made, I think we were all over the map as to private projects, city projects, affordable projects, partnership projects. No one is saying that. As a matter of fact, if you listen very carefully, nobody's saying we're talking, at least I've heard no one on this dais say so far, that we shouldn't be looking at sustainability and green building, whether that's soft costs, or whether that's greening, that's specific terminology that, if you go to the LEEDs website, they talk about. And almost every analysis you look at on the internet uses those same terms. I didn't hear anybody up here saying we shouldn't move in that direction. But you see, the problem is, when you point to Pasadena, Pasadena didn't do a half-step here and a half-step there, and one policy here and one policy there. They did a comprehensive policy that covered all the bases. They didn't say, well, we're going to do just LEED programs on city projects and partnership projects, but then we'll wait later, we'll do a comprehensive program, and then we'll wait for the state green code. I don't want to be here having this discussion again. All I'm saying is, before we take a piece of that and carve out one type of housing in this city, which is affordable housing, and say we're going to add a special contortion onto that, I want a comprehensive policy that talks about all of this. And that's what I've been saying consistently throughout. I've said absolutely nothing about not wanting to, not wanting to build sustainably. We talk about these projects that have been building, you know, it's not stopping building. Well, Ms. Reich was just at the podium, and what we just heard from her was that, no, it's not stopping projects, but these projects are pipeline projects. They're not affected by this. Now, what Mr. Fortney reported to us a week or so ago, or more, when we were talking about this, is that we were talking about some of our affordable housing. Because they are working through a checklist, probably most of them are, many of them anyway, are already at the equivalent of a LEED certified, at LEED certified projects. The question is, again, at what level are we going to make them LEED certified? LEED Silver, LEED Gold, LEED Platinum? These all have price tags on them. Water and utilities? Yes, that's true, except that there's nothing that says that a developer building a project is going to choose to opt for items on those rating systems that are going to deal with utilities or water conservation. They might choose, let's say, Mr. Quintero, you mentioned it's different in different parts of the countries. The rating system is the same, but suppose you live in a part of the country where there's a rail corridor? Just simply locating your project there is going to give you points in certain ones of the rating system. If you are, as he, Mr. Fortney pointed out, using, you know, low fume emitting paints in the interiors of the units, you get points. Recycled carpeting, you get points. Reduction of parking, bringing fewer cars onto the project. You have a lower impact, so you get points. Those are not recoupable expenses, and there's nothing that mandates a builder to say you're going to use items on that rating system that are necessarily going to recoup one penny. We would hope they would. All I'm saying is, and all I've been asking for, is a comprehensive ordinance for this city, which deals with affordable housing, partnership projects, public projects, and private projects, all at one time, not a piecemeal here and a piecemeal there. That's how we got into this in the first place. We didn't know what we were talking about. And that is simply the fact. You go back and look at that special meeting, that joint meeting, not one person up here in the dais that was speaking really understood what LEED was and what LEED Silver meant. LEED Silver versus LEED certified, LEED Silver versus LEED Gold. I want to get there too, but I want to do it in a sensible way that isn't going to turn the city and the people who are trying to build in this city upside down.
Weaver.
Okay. Who in the heck in the United States of America came up with the word "green"? Started all this.
Al Gore, I think.
Because all of a sudden, it started popping up, and now...
Bless his soul.
Green. Not purple, not red, green. You know, something just struck my mind, what Mr. Drayman said. I said it a week or so ago. First environmental document I looked at, NEPA, National Environmental Policy Act, was in 1970. Somebody says, well, you've got to look at the environmental document. I says, what the heck is an environmental document? Nobody had even heard one. I asked engineers and stuff around the Corps of Engineers, what is it? What is it? You know, and now we're being told about green technology, and I don't really understand it yet. I don't mind waiting two months to have our all knowledgeable state legislature tell us what it means, and then we'll tackle it from there. But to start developing our own policies, only to find out we're going to have to possibly change those policies, I think is the wrong way to go. Two months is not a lot, even if it's three months. What's going to happen in two or three months in this city, in this era where not much is being built? I think we can afford to wait. When it comes to senior housing, affordable housing, keeping costs down, that's a trade-off that every council I've been on since 1997 has made. We want affordable housing, we want senior housing. Now, if we're going to put the cost burden on those developers that want to build what the city wants, to me, that is a policy decision. If you want to lose potential senior housing and affordable housing projects because you put an unburdened some cost on the developers, fine. But I want to do it consciously with a policy. We don't care what it's going to cost. You put that additional cost into the project, and if you can't, well, then we'll just do without affordable housing or senior housing, until we get somebody that's mature that can afford to. Mr. Quintero, I think, will just verify my numbers, sir. This morning at the airport, we were talking about putting solar panels all over our new intermodal transportation center that we're going to build, and we're talking about putting solar panels over the parking lots at the airport. And we figure, what was it, about 25 years to break even? 25 years. Now, the airport will be there in 25 years, probably, but people that own buildings, whether they're affordable or senior housing projects, you're telling them they're going to stick around, it's going to be a lot more than two or three years. It's going to be a lot of years to even get even. So there's a lot more to think about on this. I do not like two policies. I thought we 100% agreed a few weeks ago, or a week ago, that we would wait for the state, and I want to wait for the state, then develop a policy. Maybe we'll have different policies, one for things like senior housing, affordable housing, and then another policy for private, another policy for public. But we're all stating opinions, and I don't think any of us have enough background to make a informed intellectual decision on the word "green." Thank you.
Speak for yourself, Mr. Weaver.
Well, I'll come see you. You've got a green card there, too.
I do have a green card from that noted environmentalist, Mike Moghill.
Oh, another green.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Again, thank you very much. A nice discussion, Mike Moghill. I liked it, I love the debate between all five of you, gentlemen, ladies. I believe it was Al Gore who also invented the internet. Okay? This is all about politics of the left, and I'm against that. Let's start with the moratorium. Councilman Drayman, you're right on for a change with me. So is Mr. Weaver. Mrs. Friedman, you're a little bit too left for me. I'm sorry, okay? But as a taxpayer, I don't want to have to foot the bill. I mean, I'm hurting, and affordable housing is wonderful, but, you know, they say charity begins at home. My wife is no longer be working that year. It's only Social Security, whatever money I have in the bank. 15% empty buildings in the city? Okay? Who's going to foot the bill, as Councilman Drayman and Weaver said? And the payback is very important. 20 years for a payback? Well, I'll be dead on some of these buildings. You know, I looked into double painting my windows in my house several years ago, and the guy, the builders, oh, maybe it's five to seven years, maybe in 10 years before you get a payback if you double paint all your windows. I says, God, 10 years? I might be dead by then. So who's benefiting by this? The court is still out on this environmental stuff. Every day you read in the newspaper, the people who want all this green stuff are being knocked down by new science. In fact, there's right now in the state of California, people are trying to change the law and pass a new law for this green stuff. I think brown is beautiful. Let's be objective. Taxpayers were paying the bill for many years. Pasadena has more money than we do. I believe so, Mr. Drayman. You don't think so? Well, let's put it this way, they spend it differently than we do.
That's for sure.
Okay. And we talk, you keep talking about setback. Well, why don't we have a setback of our buildings, instead of having four feet, three feet, why don't we have a setback maybe 10 feet, so we'd have more green around the buildings? It's always nice to, you know, build out to the curb. This is all about politics. I don't like it. Moratorium is wonderful. And for a change, I think this council will be doing the right thing. Thank you all, including Mr. Weaver.
I was wrong. He's not an environmentalist. Any other, are there any other comments?
Okay, well, for myself, I do disagree with the speaker. I think the most important thing we can do as a country, if nothing else, just for our national interest, never mind, you know, trying to be good to the planet and all that, but just for our national interest, the best thing we could do is to build the most sustainable buildings, to get off of foreign oil, et cetera, et cetera. You've heard me talk about it in the past, so there's no question that that's the right thing to do, if nothing else for our own, you know, national preservation. Now, to this specific matter, on the one hand, I don't think that we need to push a full LEEDs requirement on affordable building projects, because I just think it's too much. I think the green building code would suffice, and to me, it's like every dollar that goes into, if it's overdone, every dollar that goes into trying to achieve a LEEDs standard is actually money taken away from a specific unit that might be built. So I would like to put affordable housing apart. However, overall, back in 2008, when we came up with the concept, I think it was a good idea in the time, July 2008, I guess. I think it was a good idea at the time, and I would like to keep that in place until we come up with a new standard, until we adopt, if we adopt the California Green Building Code, whether we decide if LEED is going to do it or not do it, whether our staff will do it. I've got plenty of opinions on that, but I don't see any reason to sort of overthrow that July 1st decision. So that's where I'm at. I'm carving out a specific case for affordable building projects and proceed with, proceed with our past decision. Now, I have a question for Mr. Chapjin. I'm curious, because he may have been probably one of the only departments that has been operating under the standards. The new recreation center, did you operate under those standards?
Mayor Quintero, members of the council and housing authority? No, that was a project that was in the pipeline, but we are using sustainable methods there as much as possible.
I know, we talked about it.
We're incorporating those. We're incorporating those.
Okay. So, in terms of, well, then, there haven't been any civic buildings built under that policy, is that correct? I'm getting a, no, there haven't. And have there been any private? There's been very little, very little...
They've been designed.
Didn't, remember, didn't apply to purely private. Would have had to been public-private, nearly public-private. We've done a redevelopment and housing, and we, a quick think back, and none of those had, would have met the test, so, the exception of the housing projects are coming before you know.
Right, that was the only one.
How about the GWP building? Wasn't that, isn't that designed as a?
Yes, that's designed as leads by choice, given the nature of the utilities and the standard they want to set.
The pool project that we were looking at?
The pool project will be...
So they're not built, nothing has been built, but they've been designed to?
Right, the pool project will be silver certified. Maryland Mini Park, which is coming to you tonight, will also be in that process as
Okay, Mr. Weaver.
I just want to make sure, uh, remember when we got into condo conversions, where nobody, no groups going to come in and say, well, wait, we were in the process and therefore we are exempted? No, that's possibly going to happen, right?
Your, your policy is very specific. They would have to have had their packet in by July first, two thousand and eight. But again, I think the only projects we're talking about are the public-private housing projects.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because I reckon back to that mess. Another thing I just want to say, uh, if you look at the evolution of the internet, in every few weeks where there's additional changes occurring, if you look at our automobiles, how the evolution of the automobile has occurred since they went in the tank, electric vehicles, going to be a lot more of them coming out, we've got hybrids, we've got all kinds coming out. And if you don't think that we're not going to have tremendous changes in building materials that will create the more sustainable structures we want at a heck of a lot less cost, you're fooling yourselves. The word is out from the President of the United States on down. Energy efficient buildings, the greening, you see new technologies coming out, and it's only in its infancy. Allow this process to occur over the next couple decades, and the cost to build a lead certified building would probably drop tremendously with the new materials that are, be out there. So, that's for the future, but like anything, technology does cause evolution in our society.
Mr. Drayman.
I have a question. I, I want to take a crack at a motion, but I'm not sure, is that what we want? A motion, directing staff, or just?
It didn't get directed.
We are looking for a motion if you plan on varying from the existing July '08 policy.
I'd like to take a crack at a motion that does vary, um, and that is that, I would like to see a motion, let's put it that way. I won't pretend to know how to word it, but I'd like to see a motion that, consistent with our meeting on January twenty-sixth, I think it was?
Yes.
That we, um, wait for the, uh, the, uh, state green code in summer, uh, to, uh, continue the process that we have asked the Director of Community Planning to undertake in terms of the public outreach, and that we move forward with a comprehensive policy that deals with, um, sustainable, uh, development in the city across the board.
Second.
Private, uh, public and public partnership.
Second.
Say your motion.
Or some reasonable version thereof.
After you clean it up.
No, we've got it. It's clear. It's pretty clean.
Okay, any more comments? Roll call. Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero? No. All right, the motion carries. Okay, next. Ms. Starburn.
Well, my, my question is, it relates to the Housing Authority and Redevelopment Agency.
It's the council policy because the building, the permits are issued by the city. That policy now carries?
It applies across the board.
Across the board.
Okay. Any other comments for the city council?
Adjourned for the city council.
Second. We are adjourned.
Adjourned for the redevelopment.
Second.
Adjourned for the housing.
Housing is adjourned.
Will we, no, that's close.
Housing is...
Housing will recess. This meeting has ended. The next meeting will recess.
Your housing meeting was recessed. To close session.